All right, it's seven o'clock. We will call the Town of Wapoea Plane Board, make an order. Can we all rise for a pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, give the secretary, former roll call attendance, please. Here?
Here.
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 Here. Okay, all the board members should have received the minutes from September 4th meeting. If there's no discussion, entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Make a motion to accept.
Okay, motions are made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, motion carries. Okay. All right, first item on the agenda this evening is MLC Smithtown Properties LLC subdivision. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, you are?
Ryan Stokos, Dan Stokos Engineering.
Thank you. Obviously, you've received the resolution from the planner?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No questions regarding that?
No questions, so I guess we'll set up a site.
And with that, there is one small amendment to the resolution because it's going to be, number 4F will be modified to address the new engineer's letter, which will be September the 12th, which encompasses everything that was left outstanding. So with that, if there's no other questions or concerns, entertain a motion to approve the amended resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, motion carries.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, good evening. All right. All right, our next item on the agenda is Carmax Auto Superstore Site Plan and Special Use Permit.
Good evening, chair, members of the board. I'm Jennifer Gray. On behalf of Carmax, the applicant for this request, as you recall, we were here at the meeting in August when we received a one-year extension on the approvals issued last August, and we are seeking an administrative amendment of that approval resolution from last year to allow certain permits to be issued while we complete the conditions of approval. If you recall, back in August, we discussed that we're stuck in a little bit of a chicken and egg situation with DOH for the proposed septic on the site. We have to install a fill pad. DOH will not issue their final sign-off, their final approvals until that fill pad is actually installed and inspected by them. However, we need permits from the town in order to install that, but we can't get permits because we don't have DOH approval yet. So we're stuck in a little bit of a tricky situation. So in August, we discussed with the board that we're asking for an administrative amendment to that resolution from last year to allow demo permit and grading permits to be issued so that we can take down the building on the site and do the grading necessary to install that fill pad to allow DOH to come in and inspect it and get our final DOH approval. And then, once that condition is fulfilled, along with all the other ones, we'll be able to finally get the site plan signed and get building permits issued to construct the project. Since the last meeting, we did submit an exhibit that was prepared by Bowler Engineering. With me tonight is Karen Magdulowski from Bowler Engineering. That shows the limits of disturbance and the scope of work. We do understand, and we received Mr. Pagie's memo, further refinement of that exhibit will be necessary for the issuance of the permits, and we can work with the building department on that front. We also discussed the posting of a restoration bond or guarantee for the site, and we're happy to do that. We can submit a cost estimate and a restoration plan according to Mr. Pagie's comments. As I mentioned, last month Carmax did acquire ownership of the site after they received approval from the board a little over a year ago. They have construction drawings prepared and ready to go. Nobody wants to move this forward faster than Carmax. So they are fully committed to the project and just need to find a clear path forward with respect to this permit issue.
Okay. So with that, we just need, I guess at this point, the resolution would need to be amended to address the issue with the providing a restoration.
So would the restoration bond need to be included in the resolution, or would that be handled separately, I guess?
Put it in the resolution.
Okay. And then, do you also want to add language regarding the proposed construction entrance in the right-of-way, or would that be handled with the building department?
Yeah. So, I mean, yeah, I guess that question was brought up about the, would you be using the, you know, the actual entrance to the property for all the work on site, or would a new entrance be installed?
I'll let Karen address that question.
Karen Magdulowski, Bowler Engineering. So where we're proposing to put the construction entrance is actually the permanent entrance driveway location. So it would actually be the same thing that we would get the permit for anyway. It would be the same location.
But it's not one of the current ones, that's what we're saying.
That's correct.
So it'd be a new?
The back, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so they would have to then get a separate permit from the highway department.
Right, we would take care of that at the building department.
At the buil-- okay, so that'll be?
And the resolution as it's currently drafted allows them to open up those permits with the building department?
Yeah.
Correct.
In effort to?
In effort to do so. So that clarifies the question that was brought up earlier.
So the only amendment will be language regarding the restoration?
Restoration bond.
Okay.
I think the resolution, at least the version that we received last week, does include a condition about the restoration bond, condition number four, that prior to the issuance of any demo or grading permit, we're supposed to post a restoration guarantee. I know from the workshop discussion, it seemed like there was some discussion about the possibility of us receiving a demo permit prior to the posting of the restoration guarantee.
That's fine.
Yeah. So maybe we can adjust the resolution to say that prior to the issuance of any grading permit, the applicant should?
Take this out.
I don't know that, we may mobilize all at one time anyway, so I don't know that it's going to make a difference, but we appreciate that flexibility.
So far, we have no issue with that, leaving it as is, then?
No, not at all.
Okay, so we don't have to get involved with the process, they'll just do it prior
to getting a permit. Okay. All right. Any of the board members have any questions for the applicant?
Nope.
No? Okay. All right, no open-ended questions, everything's good? Questions still? All right. So with that, entertain a motion to approve the amended resolution.
So moved.
Okay, motion's made. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks.
Have a good evening. All right. Next item on the agenda this evening is Jackson Photovoltaic Ground Mounted Solar.
How's it going?
All right.
I'm not Darren Jackson.
Huh?
I said, I'm not Darren Jackson. I'm Jan Burgis from the Infinity Solar Systems, the company, the contractor. I'm here today because I'm not sure what happened after our site meeting back in April. I know there wasn't a lot of time for him to clean up, but I guess we're trying to pick up where we left off here and get exactly what's required for submissions. We've been told different things. We've been told things were delivered and not received. So I'm here to kind of hammer it down, exactly what needs, what we need to present to you to keep this project moving forward.
Okay.
And that's it. Because again, I'm still not, we have an engineering team, some of the best engineers in the country regarding solar, and nobody understands how to address the concern about the Indiana bat as it relates to a ground-mounted solar system that's going to be located nowhere near trees.
Okay, I mean, that's a simple, it's a simple one. So basically, if you're not cutting down any trees, they just have to put a notation on the plan that says they're not cutting down the trees. And at the same time, they could also put a notation on there that would address that, you know, if any trees were to be cut down, they would have to be done between November 1st to March 31st.
Right, but we, again, that was all resolved at the site meeting back in April, that no trees had to come down, the position of it was fine.
But if you put both of those comments on there, that addresses that. That all goes away. Anywhere in New York State?
On the plans. On the plan set? Yes. Not via letter?
Yeah, on the plan set, correct.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Isn't it the only thing that he has to do is just make all those notes on the plans, and that's it? That was the only thing he had left?
If they're not taking trees down.
Yeah, well, I think we have other things to discuss, too. It's not just, hey, he's got a laundry list of things. That's just, that was an easy one for me to answer for.
Yeah.
Now that comes to, well, so let's back up a second.
Yeah.
So you have both the, you have a letter both from the planner and the engineer, correct?
Yes, from both parties.
Okay, so you did get both of those?
Yes. We received them on, we received them on September 12th, and they were dated on September 11th.
Okay.
So.
All right. So you see all the, all the comments?
Yeah, and those were all, again, those are all things I thought that had been resolved since the start of this.
So was a second, so was another submission made? Because it, well, here's the question. So we had a discussion, we had a workshop meeting earlier, prior to the start of the meeting, and I think everybody was kind of looking for an additional set of plans, and nobody has an updated plan, let's put it that way.
So far, so far, we have sent, and it has been delivered to this building department, 15 copies of the plan set that I'm holding in my hand that shows the notated planting of the grass seed for the soil erosion, which after the site plan meeting was the only concern that needed to be addressed at that time.
What's the date of that?
The date of what?
The other plans.
Oh, I don't.
It was revised on, in February. So you just reset?
Yeah.
You reset the same ones?
I kept resetting the document because there should have been?
So that was, that was discussed at the site plan meeting, but the comment memos that you received from the professionals?
Which those concerns were addressed at the site plan, the site meeting?
The site visit, yeah.
But those concerns were not updated on the plans?
Via the letter. The letter that we said, actually, it's three different versions of almost the same letter, because we didn't feel the need to say, but we thought that was satisfying.
So I know, yeah, I knew, well, looking at the letters, I mean, a lot of the comments that were made were things that probably were brought up in the first comment letter that was received back when it was originally submitted.
The section block and lot thing got addressed when we first submitted the application to the building department.
Okay.
They said they had discrepancy. We said this is what we're seeing from a property shark, the website, that we pay to have a subscription to that to find out all the section block and lot information.
Okay.
So when we found a discrepancy, again, Darren's not here, he's supposed to be, but he had said that it had been resolved, and at that point, we were notified it was resolved because the application proceeded forward to come before you guys to be reviewed.
So can I see a copy of the, I can just go through this list real quick and just show you what needs to be changed on that, if you have a copy of that?
Yeah, you want?
I'll just draw on it.
If it just needs to be noticed, we can address all the concerns from your letter and add it to the plans.
Well, like, one of them is the way that you're showing the setbacks. They're coming off, they're not showing the shortest measurement from the solar array to the property line. They're coming off sort of like at a perfect 90-degree angle from it. And so you need, if you're going to show the setback to the property line, it needs to be the shortest distance to the property line. Yeah, so that's like, that's one of my comments. I don't, I don't think that it'll be an issue. I think that you're more than satisfactory distance. It's just little things like that that need to be shown correctly. I think that another note that should be included is, you know, the, you've got a lot of information on the dimensions of the solar array. What's the, you know, what's the total square footage of that surface, right? We've got X number of panels, each one is this many feet by this many feet. That equals, this is the total surface area.
The total surface area.
And then you compare that to the square footage of the house, because there's a provision in the special permit that says that it can't be more than, is it 50%?
I think it's 50. 50%.
Yeah, can't be more than 50% of the square footage of the house, but the square footage of the house isn't shown on the plans.
Okay, so show the square footage?
Yeah. So note on there as to, you know, the 10-foot brush-free area, quotation marks around that, that's just a standard note that we ask be included on plans when it comes to ground-mounted solar. That's my comment 1F, and it shows it in quotation marks. That's just a note that needs to be added to the plans.
Again, this is all going to be added to the plan set?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
We discussed screening, we don't need any additional screening, discussed setbacks. That's not an issue. Setbacks. Oh, you need to verify on the plans whether or not there is municipal water or sewer. I don't believe that there is, but it's not shown on the plans. Because it's in an R-20/40 zone, the setbacks are different whether or not you have municipal water or sewer. It's lower, right? So you can allow for denser development. So just verify that there is neither of those, or one, or the other, right? And then reflect that in the bulk table, right? And make sure that you're using the right setback requirements.
So, just so you know, it is R-40 because this customer has neither, so it's the bigger setback. So you need to show?
So he's R-40?
You need 25 to the side, 50 to the rear.
Oh, yeah, we rule.
But we need to see it.
It should just be shown on the plans as opposed to the letter. Yeah, we talked about size. My last comment, we talked about the Indiana bat note, that's another one that needs to be added to the plans. And then the other thing is for the board, which is seeker review, it's an unlisted action for the town, so given the nature of it, I don't think that we need to pursue a coordinated review, but we can. But we should have a vote on that, as to whether or not you want to proceed with coordinated or uncoordinated review, and schedule a public hearing.
Okay.
How many plans that's once do we reissue and are being corrected and amended?
B, what are we doing now? Too hard and the rest is soft, got B?
Too hard and soft?
You have these letters, correct?
Yes.
Because our comments are similar, it's just a matter of going through and just cleaning.
Adding stuff to the plan set?
Yeah, or correcting the EAF, that environmental assessment form that was submitted, there were three things that were just noted that were incorrect or marked as no.
But on the initial correction?
On that, on that EAF form, just making those corrections that we pointed out. One of them is that if the site is located over a principal primary aquifer, it's not going to impact anything, but it should be correct. So it is, it just needs to be checked, yes. The threatener endangered species, that's a northern long-eared bat, it needs to be checked, yes. The site is located in archaeologically sensitive area. The EF mapper came back and said that it was. I'm not sure if they didn't need to get a letter from SHPO, a no-impact letter for this, which is typically a simple submission online. You should have no problem getting it, given the fact that the site is previously disturbed.
And that you're not going to have any real excavation as a part of the application?
Right.
And you, should I send the corrected application to you? Because we did correct it in between the first board meeting and the site review.
This is not the application, it's the environmental assessment?
Yeah, I'm calling all the applications, everything we submitted, just gone shorthand.
Everything that you have, in the next submission, I would try to make it a complete submission with all the corrections that we're asking for.
Basically, treat it as new.
Exactly, because that's what the board needs. They need the final, final corrected, I mean, this is the process. You submit, there's, we point out if there's any errors or omissions, and then you respond, preferably in writing, to each of these comments, say, this is what we, for our comment, you know, respond to that comment specifically and say, this is how we've responded to it, this is what's included, you know? That way, there's a clean paper trail. So I recommend doing it that way. So.
Are we going to have another site meeting as well?
No, shouldn't be a need for another site meeting. No, it's just to address the concerns that I guess were brought up at the, you know, at that previous meeting. There was concerns about the, you know, the placement, there was concerns about the screening for the neighbors, and then there was the violations as well that we?
Yeah, I know, that's, but that's, you know?
Right, and apparently, he did take care of it because the deputy zoning administrator did send us a note stating that they were all, have been resolved.
Yeah, we know how long it took, so.
Hmm?
I said, we know how long it took.
Yeah, so, okay, so I mean?
The other, the other one was just the survey. So just if there's, a survey should be submitted with this application, especially?
Property survey?
Property survey.
Yeah.
Especially considering what the next step, if you get, once the board approves this, then the next step is getting a building permit from the building department, and that's going to be required as part of that process, anyway. So right now, your plan is based off, it looks like just tax map records. So if you, if they already have current property survey showing the building location, and you can either superimpose the solar array onto that and use that as a base map, you know, or if they need to get a new, a new survey.
And what would you qualify as current?
As long as it's showing all of the current?
Time periods or something?
As long as it's showing all of the current features, and it's a signed and sealed survey prepared by a licensed surveyor, then, you know, if they're, if it's showing a building footprint, and there's been an addition, and it doesn't show the addition, then it's not current. So.
Okay.
Do we need any of that information back to us before we schedule a public hearing?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds, yeah, we were talking a little bit about that earlier, because it still needs a public hearing, but I didn't realize that we didn't have everything together with the EAF.
The EAF changes are minor. With the consideration of SHPO, we can do a coordinated review, or we can make sure that we get a letter back to the effect that I anticipate from SHPO.
Right.
And do an uncoordinated review, but just not make a secret determination on our own until we know that they have coordinated with SHPO. I don't know if you want to do coordinated or un, you know, I think we can make sure that we do the hard look, either way.
So who else? So was SHPO, and then obviously?
A DEC with the long-eared bat, which is taken care of with the note, because they're also not going to?
Then that, there was nobody else, then?
No.
Okay.
I think with?
So if we do it as a coordinator review, we'd have to put it out as a, we'd have to?
Circulate for lead agency, and we have to wait for 30 days. But we're also going to want a full submission before the public hearing. I think we can still schedule the public hearing. We would want to kick it out to the second meeting in October, the first in November. That would give them enough time to do their homework and get back to us, and make sure that we have a complete submission, at least.
Yeah, before.
Before we move forward.
Agreed.
So that that is what is available to the public prior to the public hearing?
Yeah. So what's everybody's feeling with doing a coordinator review and circulating for lead agency at this time? Everybody wants to go that route, we can do that.
Can't we just do it uncoordinated?
And then just let them do their portion with the other two agencies and get their responses back to us prior to them coming back for final approval? Do I do it that way?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
Saves them a little time.
All right, so I guess we'll do it as an uncoordinated review?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and then that would give them, so then the next thing would be is we're willing to schedule a public hearing for, I don't know, November 4th. And that would give plenty of time to start the process with everybody.
Well, like I said, we have the majority of the answers to everything. We've actually already corrected and submitted before, so we have most of the stuff readily available. We're just going to need time to transfer everything of all the requests from Mr. Simpson onto the plan sets, and we don't need that much time. We turn stuff around really quick, so.
What about the survey?
The survey is where the things will get complicated, because I'm not sure if the town is in possession of one currently. I'm not sure if Mr. Jackson's in possession of one currently. So that would be the only thing that would add significance to the timeline?
Okay.
On our half. Because I could, I would send these plans out before I'd pulled out of the parking lot, and we'd probably have them by lunchtime tomorrow with all the notes added to them. So that wouldn't be the issue, but the survey thing?
And get, and getting that information onto that. Also, it's not needed prior to the public hearing, but prior to secret determination and any possible approvals, we want to make sure that you reach out to SHPO and make sure that it's not going to raise any red flags.
The installation you're talking about, reach out to them, notify them of the installation and see what they say about it?
Yeah, right, because the EAF has flagged you in an archaeologically sensitive area. But for the public hearing, I don't know, they can, they can try to rush. We can always adjourn it if they can't get this information in time for the second meeting in October.
That's what I was saying, I always recommend going out to the 4th of November.
Okay.
Do that meeting, and then go from there. That gives them plenty of time to circulate.
Yeah.
On their end, you know, and then they can get the responses back.
Yeah, because the deadline is also very generous, right? On our end, it doesn't give them a lot of time. It's not like?
It doesn't, right.
The submission deadline, I mean.
Yeah, it gives them a month and a half, really, to work on it, and if, for some reason, you know, we have the public hearing on the November 4th, and we don't have anything, we adjourn it.
Okay.
Forward from there. Sound feasible?
Sure. Signature blocks?
Yeah.
Yeah, they add, yeah, so on the front.
So add places for us to sign?
Right, so on the front page, there's a, right, there's a, there's a section that you have to put in there, you know, stating where the secretary and the chairman sign. And he could also send you that, she can give you a copy of the standard block that's usually placed there.
Got it.
So you have something to work off.
So something to put on the plan set?
Something you put on the plan set for the final plan set.
Okay.
In this next submission, it should be, you know, it should be in place, just in case, that's, so that we give view to make sure that it's there. Okay. All right, so, all right. So we didn't, hold on. Did we vote on the uncoordinated review?
No.
Okay. All right, motion to?
Uncoordinated review.
Okay, so the motion's been made?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See none, motion carries. So we've done that.
Any motion to schedule a public hearing on November the 4th?
Correct. So, so moved, okay. All right, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Non-motion carries. Okay, you know what you need to do?
Yeah, everything is good. Again, I'll be in contact with the building department and all the points of contact that we have so far.
Okay.
About what's going on with the property survey, and you'll have a response from us within a couple of days, depending?
Okay, let them know in the office, and they can handle it from there.
Yeah.
You know, but obviously, you got to get your, you know, on your end, you have to get things moving to get the plans updated, and also follow up with the, you know, the other two state agencies.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep, thank you, I appreciate your time. Get home safe, everyone.
Okay, have a good night. Okay, so the next, next item on the agenda is discussion regarding Chelsea Farm subdivision. We've received a letter from, from the buyer for the property in regard to, in regard We've received a letter from, from the buyer for the property in regard to, in regard to the tree planting restoration bond. With that, I don't think that, from our earlier discussion during the workshop, is, I guess, the resolution that was passed at the last meeting that was required to stay in place until either final approval is made, correct? So, I guess, at this point, there's really no action that we can take at this time, if that's correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so, I guess they'll have to, between the buyer and the seller, they'll have to come up with, working out how to maintain that bond in place until the final approval is, is set. So, they'll have to address that, they'll have to address that on their own. Okay. So, with that, really no action for us? So, now, the last item is an extension for Betero subdivision. I know we did have some discussion on that. They were asking for a 290-day extension, and I don't see anybody here from, to represent them, so, we did have during the workshop, we had earlier discussion regarding this. The board, I guess, wants to just verify that there's been some type of communication with the health department, that there's an issue, what the issues are with the plan, that the health department's not signing off at this time. So, I guess we're only inclined to possibly issue one 90-day extension if that's what the board wishes, and then, they can go from there, once they've submitted communications with the health department to our, you know, to the staff, prior to making another, another extension after the 90 days. If that's what the board feels, we'll open up any discussion if anybody wants to bring it up, but...
I think that's reasonable.
Okay. All right, so, then, I guess at this point, if everybody's in agreeance, we'll issue one 90-day extension, which would then run retroactively from August the 7th and would end around November the 6th. So, with that, if somebody wants to make a motion to approve one 90-day extension?
Make a motion.
Okay, motion's been made?
I'll second that.
You have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say none, motion carries. All right, so, now, we're down to the end of the agenda this evening. Is there anything else that we need to discuss? Okay, if not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, adjourned.